Welcome to a special 11 Listens tragedy in Wilkinsburg live at the Hosanna House with your moderator, Darieth Chisholm.
It was traumatizing. I had anything that was going through my mind that this man was gonna either get the kids and shoot them.
Gunfire rings out through the raindrops, shattering the calm of the Wilkinsburg community. Parents rush their children to safety as police work to end the terror. The tragedy is over. Now it's time for neighbors to come together to heal. Good evening, everyone. I'm Darieth Chisholm here in Wilkinsburg at the Hosanna House for a very special live 11 Listens Town Meeting. We, of course, this evening are talking about the tragedy that occurred here in Wilkinsburg yesterday with now a whole house full of people who are hoping to find resolution, find answers, and even ask questions. This is our 11 Listens Town Meeting live for the next hour. We, of course, will be addressing their questions and their issues. Before we do that, we'd like to take a look at the timeline, the event that led up to yesterday's tragedy. 10:45 a.m. Police say Ronald Taylor shot a maintenance worker at the Woodside Garden Apartments and then set his apartment on fire. 11 a.m. Police say Taylor moved to the Burger King on Wood Street. That's where police say he shot a man having coffee. 11:05. Witnesses say Taylor shot a man in this van in McDonald's parking lot. Then, he walked into the restaurant, went behind the counter, and shot the store manager. He walked out of the other side of McDonald's and shot a man waiting in this red car at the drive-thru. 11:10 a.m. Police say Taylor then fired two shots at police. 11:15. Taylor sought safety in the Penn West apartment building. Noon, police began evacuating that building. 12:45. Thirty-seven kids were evacuated from a daycare center inside the Penn West building. One child walks out with his hands in the air. At 2:15, the suspect surrenders. He's taken into custody and driven to the Wilkinsburg Police Station. Suspect Ronald Taylor is now charged with the deaths of three people. Two other people are now surviving in the hospital at this point. There are lots of people who obviously witnessed that crime, there are many others who've been working to help restore the feelings, other people who did witness it at the McDonald's and the Burger King. Tony, who worked very diligently at some of the churches here, particularly Covenant, worked to counsel some of the people who were at the McDonald's. What were some of their initial feelings, some of the things that they were saying in the beginning?
I think their main concern at McDonald's was the fact that one of the managers had been shot. And it was such a shock for them. Initially, the woman that was first confronted by the man, I mean, she offered to help him, and she saw a gun in his hand, but I'm sure she was in a state of shock. She didn't know what to say other than, "May I help you?" And then the manager came up and, you know, he shot him. And it was such a shock for her and then the other employees. And I think a couple of the employees had enough presence of mind to surround him and begin to try to help him and stop the bleeding. But it was just a shock for all of them, and their main concern was for him and his welfare.
Did any of them express ever having seen him? I mean, this is a man who obviously lived in the neighborhood. Had they ever seen him before? Did they know his face when he walked in the door?
No, they didn't. None of them had seen him before, as far as I know. The woman that initially waited on him was, she remarked about the deadness in his eyes and how he was very slow and deliberate and how he didn't seem to, he wasn't trying to run or get away or anything like that. He was very purposeful in what he had done, and then he went on, you know, out to shoot.
It had to be absolutely tragic for the young people who then turned to you for counseling. How do you counsel someone like that who's just witnessed a crime such as this?
Well, I think one of the things that was very helpful, we have a strong ministerial community here in Covenant, and so there were clergy from different churches as well as at Covenant. But I think the main thing was to allow them to have the opportunity to talk about what had occurred and how they felt about it, because what happens is, you know, you're just so full of emotion at that point, and you're almost not sure of how to talk about it, but it's real important to get those emotions out and to be able to state, you know, what you saw and how you feel about it.
Okay, thank you very much. What people saw yesterday here in this community had to be very shocking, because I know that Wilkinsburg has worked very hard to change the image here. Crime is down, gang violence is down. Lots of people live here, enjoy living here, and yet this has shattered that. This has changed what's gone on. Yes, it was one person, but in many cases, obviously, it's affected many lives as a result of that. How do you, what do you do with that? Where do you go when you've created this image of a great town and now one incident shatters that? What's the next step? Yes, Mayor of Wilkinsburg, Wilbur Young.
I think we go back to our faith. We got here over the tough years because we worked together and we addressed all these hard issues as one community, just building this testament to the faith of the people in Wilkinsburg and working together. So we go back to this faith. Remember that although we worked together, we had help, and he who helped us is still with us. He wouldn't have gotten us here and then walked away yesterday.
And in regards to what you did prior to this, obviously, the town has, as we said, quote-unquote, "changed the image." Nothing's changed, obviously, I mean, in terms of keeping that image going. What were some of the things, however, that led to the change, to the reduction in crime, to the community feel again?
You know, I think it had a lot to do with the people, the community deciding that there were some things that they wouldn't accept in the community, that they had to stand up for the community, and they did. It was the community working with the law enforcement officers and elected officials, determining that we wanted to have a better community, and we did that. We worked hard at it.
Thank you very much. We obviously have a lot to talk about tonight and the next hour. Plenty of residents here who want to speak their mind, along with officials and leaders in the community. We'll be back with more of their concerns as 11 Listens Live Town Meeting in Wilkinsburg continues. Stay with us. Welcome back, everyone. I'm Darieth Chisholm. You're watching an 11 Listens Live Town Meeting in Wilkinsburg as we continue our full coverage on the incidents that have happened here yesterday and how this community plans to heal. Parents, of course, have filled the room, along with many people here in the community. One such parent who's obviously concerned about violence, but how to prevent it. Your name, please, and your question.
Marcia Silvio, and actually, it's a concern with Allegheny County. The Allegheny County Health Department Violence and Injury Prevention Program has had a program that has been used widely across the county for the past five years, reaching in excess of 60,000 people. As of last year, as of July, they've lost a major portion of their funding. So the program is not able to go into the schools, go into the senior centers, go into the communities, which it has. It has support from the community members, support from the police department, support from these school districts and school administrators through the county, and that's a very, it's a major concern why the county has not come up with funding in some way. We've tried various avenues. We've tried representatives, getting money from the state, to no avail. But this program talks on these issues. It teaches children about violence and how to resolve their conflicts, not to go near weapons. It has gun lock information for adults. So that my concern is, why is this not, why haven't they reinstated this program to full capacity?
Great, thank you. Anyone from the county here who'd like to comment on that, please? Anyone from the county who'd like to comment?
We didn't hear the question last year. We didn't hear her.
Her concern, obviously, is county funding on issues for prevention of violence and that perhaps the county is not doing all it can, all it can in terms of funding. Anyone want to comment on that, piggyback on it, add on it?
Sure.
You're standing here, why not? Your name, please.
My name is George Solomon, and what I'm about to say is not going to please anybody in here. When I looked at the morning show, now listen to the President of the United States, and the President talked about gun control. It's about everyone here putting in the time to let those who have given up hope, to put in time to help us who have given up hope. There are a whole bunch of people here who have given up hope. This young man who committed this heinous act is sending out a message, and it was up to the President of the United States, and I say here right now, "Mr. President, you were supposed to tell the American people to stand up and be counted and go into the schools and help the young people," because they are terrified. I taught art in this school district voluntarily, and 95% of the children are terrified. Not scared, not apprehensive, but terrified. And this is worldwide, not nationwide, and in respect to you, ma'am, not countywide. It is not about funding, it is about time. People need to put in the time, not the money.
And that's a, thank you very much. That's a very good point. Our kids are obviously, our kids are obviously affected by this, affected by lack of this, if you will, and certainly affected by the continuous coverage, if you will, of these kinds of crimes, and who then will spend the time in terms of...
And I challenge, in all due respect to everyone here, I challenge from the President of the United States on down to tell every single adult, black, white, red, yellow, Hindu, Catholic, Muslim, to get into the schools, stop spending time making money, and take time out, because I guarantee you...
Sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to just, because obviously, there are lots of people here who feel the same way, sir.
I guarantee you, this will happen again.
Thank you.
Columbine was not a one-time effort. Flint, Michigan was not a one-time thing. It will happen again. I challenge every single one of you who are here tonight...
Sir, thank you very much.
...in front of the elementary schools tomorrow morning.
Sir, we agree with you.
There is nothing more important than life, and if you do not put in the time, I will be in front of Kelly School tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone else have a comment? We can, we can talk on this, please.
Because there's nothing more important than life, you will be there, because there is nothing more important than life, and I guarantee...
All right, folks, thank you, sir, for your comment. We obviously have lots of issues, particularly those that affect children, and obviously, he's quite emotional about those that affect the children, because, of course, they are probably the most vulnerable in all of this. We've got many more parents and many more people in the audience who'd like to talk further about that. We're gonna take a break, and we'll be right back with more. Stay with us. I'm Darieth Chisholm here in our 11 Listens Town Meeting in Wilkinsburg. This has obviously left lots of people in mourning, including those victims who unfortunately died at the hands of the suspect yesterday, Joseph Healy being one of those people. Jim, thanks so much for coming out and talking with us today. Your family, obviously, is trying to work through this. Your night last night, can you tell us about that?
It was long. You know, we're just waiting for family to come in and just starting to work through it. So, up late and going all day today. And I've been watching the news, and I have to agree with the gentleman. I'd also like to address the President and challenge him. I also don't believe it's a gun control issue. I'm not certain about the hate crime issue either. Certainly, this man was blinded by hate. If he could see, he would have not shot Joe Healy. He was a man that could help him. He was a man that would listen to his story. However, he was driven by a demon called mental illness. And there's a safety net that's dropped out. In the mid-'80s, funding was lost for mental health facilities. These people have gone out into the community. They're still trying to close facilities like Western Center. And you can run with neglect for a while, but then a roof is gonna cave in. That's part of what's happening. So I'd like to challenge everyone in the community, everyone in the nation, to look at the people involved. Put the resources into the people, not worry about the technology, whether it's guns or gun control. Focus on the people.
You're quite a compassionate man to give your heart, obviously, to the illness that this man suffered, suffers.
He was hurting. There's no doubt he was hurting.
And as I recall from even last night, obviously, reading this story, I recall you saying that you forgive him.
Yeah, it's something that we're certain that Joe has done, and our entire family is unified in forgiveness, and we ask that the community find it in their hearts to be able to forgive him. It's not the same as amnesty. We understand he's gonna have to pay for his crime, but we don't have to hate him.
Thank you, Jim, thank you.
And my family is also concerned about the death penalty, and most of us don't agree with it.
Thank you, Jim, thank you. Quite a strong family, quite a giving and forgiving family. I can't say that most families would forgive a man who is alleged to have committed the crimes that happened here yesterday. But he does bring up a very good point, and that is the issue of mental illness. And what do we do when there are people who suffer mental illness and really have no place to turn? You may know some people like that, who sit at home and perhaps wallow, if you will, in their illness, in their hate, in their sickness, and perhaps have no place to turn. Is there anyone here who represents someone or some agency on mental health, or can at least talk on that standpoint? Yes, ma'am?
What we need now, they moved all the caseworkers from here. I'm wanting the people to go to Allegheny East. I'm supposed to be mentally retarded. The question is, why did they move them from here when we need them? We need them back here, not in East Liberty. We need them back here in Wilkinsburg, where we can reach them when something like this is going on. Right now, I can't think, I can't do nothing else. I'm shaking. I was there when the guy first went off. I was at the church right there across from where the fire started. What are we supposed to do? I can't even think straight to even go to work.
Thank you very much. She brings up a very important point. What is she supposed to do? What is she supposed to do? That's a very good question. Thanks for sharing that.
Tell me. I wanna know. What is Allegheny East gonna do?
Likewise, Mike Hogan, I'm Adrian's fiancee. I'm also a client of Allegheny East. I have been for almost 10 years, and I'm quite concerned that the community may have a backlash against that organization and the mentally ill and mentally retarded clients it serves, because, of course, Mr. Taylor is a client also. We've been in this community for, I guess, around 20 years, and Allegheny East and its clientele have worked very hard to build Wilkinsburg. And we do not want to be thought of as people who would condone or encourage or help people commit highness acts like this or break the law in general. As a rule, we're pretty much law-abiding people.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry, we're just gonna need to go to break.
I'll answer when you finish.
Okay, great, thank you. You bring up another great point. Obviously, there can be perhaps some discrimination, if you will, against those who are mentally ill, and how then, what do you do with that? Where do you turn? We've got some phone numbers we'd like to leave you with. One, the Center for Violence, let's see, the hotline number for the Center for Victims of Violent Crimes. Of course, if anyone is, has questions or perhaps needs some help in this arena, you can give them a call. The phone number, 412-392-8582. You can call there 24 hours a day if you, in fact, are in need of some help or perhaps you know someone. Give them a call, they'll be there waiting for your phone call. We need to go to break. We'll see you on the other side of the break. Stay with us. As the President addresses the issue of gun legislation and the nation, obviously, talks constantly about gun control and gun legislation, it is obviously always a very hot topic in any crime event, certainly in one as heinous as this one involving the deaths of three people. Some people seem to believe that it is gun control, others think that, obviously, it's the person and the will who has the gun. The Chief of Police, if you wouldn't mind joining us for this, how do you address that? Because, obviously, in these kinds of incidents, you know, people are totally, obviously, against guns, but obviously, with the legislation coming up, there's some protection of allowing those gun owners to keep their guns, but still the concerns of parents who say, "Get them out of the house."
Well, certainly, as you know, it's a very, very controversial issue throughout the country, and one of the things, obviously, that I've seen over the years, 13 years as a police chief throughout in three states, is that, as you know, guns don't kill people by themselves. You know, people, people kill people. There are an overabundance of guns in the United States, but at the same time, education is something we've really got to work on. The criminals, the bad guys, are gonna always have guns, even if they're banned from the streets. It will come in and flow like drugs come from source countries. The bad guys will get that. The majority of crimes that we find involving violence usually involve a stolen gun, a gun taken or borrowed from somebody else. Rarely does someone go into a gun shop and buy a gun and go out and perpetrate a crime. And so that's an issue. Again, it's a very difficult issue, but it's going to come to the point where we're all gonna have to start educating each other as to gun safety. The gun locks are an important thing. As far as automatic weapons, I don't believe there's a, there's a need for automatic weapons on our streets. I cringe at the fact that our SWAT teams have to use automatic weapons out there, even though it is a necessary evil. Those bullets, they spread out, they go through a lot of walls, and it's just a very dangerous scenario. So it's something that's not gonna be resolved overnight.
We also should point out at this time that we received several phone calls commending the police department in Wilkinsburg, as well as the SWAT team on handling yesterday's very volatile situation.
Well, we appreciate that. One of the things we realized we had to do in a very short time was to, was to totally isolate the area, isolate the suspect. As you know, he fired two rounds at our officers. They were justified in using deadly force. Their decision at that time was not to do that. They obviously didn't know he was gonna go into a building, but they did have cover and concealment, and they knew officers were coming to set up a perimeter, and they did not, they did not fire. Once he got into the building, of course, our people isolated him and contained him in a particular area and initiated dialogue, so our people could basically go from floor to floor and remove all of the people, including the 37 children. Had the gunman got up at any particular time, then we could have, again, probably faced that issue of deadly force. He did, in fact, point the gun a couple of times at officers that were concealed and covered. So there was some very uncommon restraint there, and as I've said before, we value human life in this community, and that was something that we did, we believe, correct yesterday, but we may not do the same thing tomorrow. But we're happy, at least, with that result this time.
Great, thank you. The day before that, two days ago, obviously, we had to report the very tragic incident that happened in Flint, Michigan, involving a six-year-old who brought a weapon to school and fired on another six-year-old, killing her. And as we talk about gun control and we talk about the issues of keeping guns safe in one's home, what do you do when a six-year-old pulls a gun out of their home, takes it to school, and fires on a child? Officer Adams, I understand you spend a lot of time in the schools talking with young people. If you wouldn't mind standing, please. What are some of the things that you talk with kids about just in relation to guns?
Well, I teach the DARE program. You may have seen the DARE police car. It's in fact a regular police car, but it has "DARE" written on the side. What those letters represent is the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program. It's teaching kids to avoid drugs and also violent behavior. And today's curriculum, it's a 17-week curriculum. Today, I went into the Kelly School and into the Johnston School, and one of the topics, obviously, was yesterday's events. I had three issues, major issues, to discuss with the kids, but we led off with the events of yesterday. We talked about conflict resolution, how to handle violent or conflicts, disagreements, without resorting to violent behavior. And we, I'm more or less tailored to today's curriculum based upon yesterday's events. I do have to disagree with Mr. Solomon that the figure is 95% of children that are, that need help and so forth. Quite a few of the kids I deal with, I deal with eight different elementary school kids in the fifth grade level, and I do disagree. I would say it's less than 30% of the kids that are in serious need of help. Most of the kids in the classroom, they know the difference between right and wrong. They know how to treat adults, they treat me with respect. It's just a few kids that need some serious help, and I try to address those individuals as best I can.
Great, thank you. We know, obviously, in every community, there are some children that need help, and as many of you would probably agree, someone needs to recognize that and intervene before there's a problem, even with young children. Obviously, yesterday's incident didn't involve kids, but we can all, we can never forget and always, we need to be mindful of our young children who watch incidents like that, who know about it, who talk about it, and who themselves are having issues or problems. Any parent in the room who would like to speak with us in terms of how best to handle a child who sees this, maybe how you handled the situation last night? They see this, they hear it consistently. What do you do with our kids? I will find someone in the next few minutes that will like to talk about that, and when we come back, we'll speak with a parent on perhaps what were their suggestions last night as they put their little one to bed and talked about that very tragic incident here in Wilkinsburg. Stay with us. We're always trying to find ways to protect our children and, obviously, keep them comforted in such a situation, and parents, obviously, had a very difficult time, particularly those who live here in this community, trying to explain what happened yesterday. Hope, you're here with your son, you live here, you had to talk about it. What did you say and how did you say it?
First of all, I started off to see exactly what he knew about what was going on, because I actually found out later that the schools really were trying to keep it from the children, but naturally, rumors had gone around, a lot of them were false, as most rumors are. So I let him sit down and watch the news, and then we had a real big discussion afterwards. And then, when I found out that they were having the prayer vigil, I made him go to the prayer vigil with me last night, and I told him if there's anything he needs to talk about, to, you know, just let me know. I'm always there, gonna be there for him.
And perhaps the best way to handle this situation is to be open and to discuss it and to show it and to say, "This is real, and this is how we're going to handle it."
Yes, most definitely.
Okay, thank you, Hope, thank you. There obviously were several young children, toddlers, babies, in fact, that were in a daycare during this incident yesterday. Thirty, over 30 some, on the third floor where the suspect was held up. Anyone who worked in that building or perhaps worked at the daycare and want to talk with us about the children that were there and how perhaps they were affected? us about the children that were there, and how perhaps they were affected? This incident, however, started in the apartment building of the suspect Ronald Taylor. And as we understand, obviously, we're still putting these pieces together, but he was quite angry over a situation involving some maintenance workers there. And prior to going on this shooting rampage, had some run-ins with the people there, including firing on one of the maintenance workers there. We have someone who works or lives in the building. And as I understand, were you home at the time?
No, I was at work.
Do you know the suspect?
To see him. I've been on the elevator with him. My mom lives in a building, so my mom and my grandmother were there.
And your name, please?
Monique Frost.
Monique, you live in the same building. Perhaps when you came home from work, or maybe you heard it at work, what did you think when you knew this was the person that lived in the same building that you live in?
Well, actually, my brother lives in the building as well, and he paged me 911 three times, so I knew it was pretty serious. And when I returned the call, he said, there's been a fire, someone's been shot, and it's happened on mommy's floor. So I rushed home. When I got there, my mom was outside, my grandmother was outside with paramedics. The problem that I'm having with the whole situation is I am a mental health therapist, and I also study race relation crimes in Pennsylvania. And initially, his anger caused him to set his apartment on fire after shooting the maintenance man. There are all African-Americans that live in that building, except for one person. He did not knock on anyone's door. He did not warn anyone that the fire had been set to get out safely. Therefore, I think that he just does not respect life. I don't think at first it was racially motivated at all.
You, as you said, are a mental health worker. Did you know he had issues? Were you aware that, I mean, and to double that, if you will, you also work with race relations, and so it is alleged at this point that, obviously, perhaps it was racially motivated. All of the warning signs, perhaps, that dealt with that, did you see any of that? Did you know it? And furthermore, you obviously lived in that building. Perhaps you could have been of some assistance.
No, I did not know it. He had never had spoken words to me. He would often get on the elevator, nod his head, continue to go. He has, however, called the maintenance management and complained of noise in the hallway in reference to my nephews who are two and four. They would get off the elevator, be pretty excited to see my mom and run down the hall. And he seemed kind of disgruntled about that. However, I've never had a conversation with him to be able to assess any type of feelings he may be having.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. She brings up the point, obviously, that has been a very touchy subject, particularly here in this community, that is 52% African-American, 48% white, a great community for families to bring their children up in. And yet, we're now dealing with the possibility that this could have been racially motivated. And in this instance, obviously, it's a very touchy subject. She says he didn't respect life at all. And obviously, most people would agree with that. But in regards to dealing with the racial subject, in regards to healing through that process, how, I understand there are many clergy that are here in the room who've been counseling those people. How have you dealt with that? What have been some of the issues you've been faced with, and how have you dealt with that? Sir, if you could please stand for us. Thank you.
Well, one of the gentlemen that I talked to, he seemed to be very fluent, but he was real agitated. We asked him first if he would want to tell us how he felt. We were trying to get him to kind of empty out and settle down. But he said he was so angry that he wished he could get to the guy before the police did. And he said he was watching his manager. He said he saw him start going down. He said he thought he was playing or something, because he didn't hear a shot. He wasn't aware of what was going on. As he walked around toward the manager, he said he saw this blood coming out the side of his head. He said, and that's when he panicked and realized the situation. And he and some of the employees tried to help. But as we counseled the people in the room, now, this guy was about 50 years old. Jeff was his name. He seemed to be calming down. He wanted to call his brother and let him know he was all right. But I was watching Pastor Tony Turner, as she was counseling with some of the younger girls over there. We heard cries, we heard some of them crying, some of them angry. But for the most part, I think that everyone realized that this was a random act against our community. And I think that in the end, in the wake of this, we're going to find that it pulls us together against a common enemy. I've seen evidence of that already.
Thank you. If you're watching, and you are angry about this, as many people are, when we come back, we'll talk with some of the counselors here, who can perhaps give us some advice on dealing with that anger, and how to move past it, and how to heal in a very volatile situation. We'll be right back. There are several families affected by this, many more victims than we'll ever know that are affected by this, because they're the family of some of the victims, those that were slain, and obviously, those that are still in the hospital. And Bob, I understand you, along with many other people from Covenant Church, were there at the hospital, working with some of the families. Many of them, I'm sure, very grief-stricken, and perhaps very angry. How do you deal with that? What do you do?
I think the first thing that happens when somebody has that kind of a trauma in their life, they're afraid. They're afraid of what could have happened, or what didn't happen. And somebody said one time that fear is false expectations appearing to be real. And so fear produces anger. If you can't deal with the fear, you can't deal with the anger, because there's a frustration that people have, that they don't have a release for. And so if our perspective is wrong about a person, or about a people group, and we're categorizing people, then what happens is, we can't get out of that. So one of the things that we try to do is to help people see that, as Mr. Healy said, he said, here is a person who had a random act of hatred. And it wasn't because, you know, he himself represents a whole people group. He was one person. He represented himself. And when people can understand that, then they can begin to release the fear, the false expectations that appear to be real. And that's the first step.
And the families who will obviously have to bury their loved ones, how do they take the first steps? How do they move past this?
I think the first step for them is just knowing that there's people that are around them to support them. And that was our primary reason for going to the hospital, just to be there, just to have somebody that was far enough removed from the situation, that could give them, hopefully, some perspective, somebody that just cared, just would be there. And going back to what the gentleman said earlier, you know, the time that's spent just being with people. It's not so much being able to provide a program, but it's more, how do people relate to people, and get beyond their facade, get beyond their exterior, and say, you're a person, I'm a person, we're important. How do we relate to one another in this situation?
Okay, thank you so much, Bob. He talks about people. This room is filled with people. People who have been seeking answers, who come for support, who come for solace, who come to just be around, to help in this time. And I think the fact that this room is filled is very representative of the people of Wilkinsburg, and perhaps the community and the care that each of you show. If you would, please stand and have a word with us.
First, I want to talk about Joe Healy, who, he has a special place in our heart, because when we lost our pastor three years ago, he actually came in and did grief counseling for us. And so it's kind of sad to hear that he's lost in that way, but he blessed our church in a mighty way. This community has done a lot of things to really get together. And I think what we need to do at this point, there's no overnight solution to a problem that's been around for years. But I think if we, as a community, would get behind the other communities, and get behind the things that are going on in the church, the Ministerium Association is doing some things to try to bring the people together, and I think we need to get behind those, like the Hosanna House, like Wilkinsburg Ministerial Association, so that we can work together to bring a solution to this problem. And prayer is definitely the key. And I would challenge you and everyone in this room to pray. God tells us that we ought to pray. And I think prayer is the key to the beginning of a solution.
Thank you. We need to take another break. Stay with us as we continue our coverage here live in Wilkinsburg. There are several issues here to be discussed tonight, and we'll always be talking about them. But obviously, the one issue is dealing with people who have mental health issues, and what to do, where to turn, and how to turn fast. Because in situations like that, like what happened yesterday, someone needs to step in. When you know someone, Glenna, and I know you represent an agency that can certainly help, when a neighbor or a family member knows that someone is suffering, what do they do?
Okay, I think they need to return to the agencies in the community that have the experience to help. And many of them are represented here this evening. There are representatives here from the Center for Victims of Violent Crime. I'm from Family Services of Western Pennsylvania, and a Wilkinsburg resident. And we do counseling services in this community. And I know there are many folks from Allegheny East in the audience tonight, too. So there are lots of resources out there that can help, and if people just turn to those.
How do you, however, battle the stigmatism that goes with that? In fact, I understand that there's some people who won't turn to mental health agencies for fear of being stigmatized, and yet they need the help.
That's a big problem that we do deal with. And mental illness is often a hidden disease. It's not, you can't pick out someone who has that as they walk down the street or live in your apartment building. That's not that simple. And it's a cultural problem. We do know that it's very difficult, often, for other cultural groups to turn to professional agencies. We haven't solved that problem yet, but it's something that needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you very much. We will obviously continue addressing those issues. Several victims have obviously came out of this, the two victims that are in the hospital, as well as people who are victims because their families are suffering as a result of this. We spent a lot of time talking with the Healy family throughout this process, primarily because Joe was a great guy, as they tell us. He was very much involved in this community, very much involved in the lives of young people, and quite often spent his time healing people. His family, more of his family is represented here this evening. As we wrap up, again, I can't say enough about you guys, that you're here, that you have forgiven in some instances the situation, and that what you want most is for people who, in situations like the suspect, get help. How do you find that in your heart, to do that?
Well, part of it's because of Joe. I mean, he was a storyteller, and he worked with children, and he wanted to give them hope. And a lot of his messages were about peace. And if Joe was here right now, he'd be here in support of the community. And we're just lucky to have a very strong family. And we've lived here all our lives, and we love Joe, and we know he'd be here for everybody. So I don't know what else to say.
Just that, in the same way that Joe gave us the tradition of teaching us through some of this grief thing, that when you believe someone, that you leave them in peace, and try not to take your anger with you, which unfortunately, this man passed upon us, that we need to remember, all of us, to take the time to tell those who we care about that it's, you know, that we love them.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for sharing with us. This is obviously a very tough time for your family. As we close out tonight, we want to thank each of you all for being here for our 11 Listens Town meeting. And we'd also like to just perhaps send prayers to the families of those victims who died in this tragic incident yesterday. 71-year-old Joseph Healy, of course, his family of Wilkinsburg. He was inside the Burger King when that happened. 55-year-old John Kroll of Cabot, Butler County, maintenance worker, killed at the Woodside Apartments. And 20-year-old Emil Santa Levici of Greenfield. Our hearts and our prayers go out to their families. Thank you once again for being here at our 11 Listens Town meeting. And we know that Wilkinsburg will continue to be a community of healing, because many people came out tonight to make that happen. Thanks for watching 11 Listens. I'm Darieth Chisholm. Good night, everyone.